It's working with everyone's computer.
Come, follow me.
I wonder if there's something up there.
Robert Arkins over there.
Did you restart the whole computer? Yeah.
What must I do? How can I serve you? Is it true what I do is the way to be near you? I'm listening, though sometimes I can't hear you. Looking around fills me with wonder at the way you can keep this world running smoothly. Thinking of you always seems to soothe me. I know you're probably not a man or a woman for a time or a season, but I'm here and life is dear. And I guess that's a good enough reason to say, just let me do what you put me here to. Let me be what you want me to be, and I hope it'll cheer you. I'm listening, and I think I can hear you. Even when I thought I didn't believe you believed in me. And everyone is a part of you, and anyone can know you. All they've got to do is be. I'm listening, and I think I can hear you.
Bob Arkins, Al Lockett. April Helen. April Helen, we are ready for the singing bowl.
Open the eyes of my heart, Lord. Open the eyes of my heart. I wanna see you. Yeah, I wanna see you. Open the eyes of my heart, Lord. Open the eyes of my heart. I wanna see you. Yeah, I wanna see you. See you high. See you high and lift it up. Shining in the light of your glory. Pour out your power and love as we sing, holy, holy, holy. Open up my arms of my heart, Lord. Open the arms of my heart. I wanna hold you. I wanna hold you. Again. Open the arms of my heart, Lord. Open the arms of my heart. I wanna hold you. I wanna hold you. See you high and lift it up. See you high and lift it up. Shining in the light of your glory. Pour out your power and love as we sing, holy, holy, holy. Bring it down. Holy, holy, holy. Holy, holy, holy. Yeah, I wanna see you. Yeah, I wanna hold you. Again, louder. Holy, holy, holy. Holy, holy, holy. Yeah, I wanna see you. Yeah, I wanna hold you. Ready? So open the mind of my heart, Lord. Open the mind of my heart. I wanna know you. And the U-Book will show you. Open the mind of my heart, Lord. Yeah, open the mind of my heart. I want to know you. And the U-Book will show you. See you high and lift it up. See you high and lift it up. Shining in the light of your glory. Pour out your power and love as we sing, holy, holy, holy. Love you, Father.
Al Lockett, that's way controller.
So open the eyes of my heart, Lord. Yeah, open the eyes of my heart. I wanna see you. Yeah, I wanna see you. Open the eyes of my heart, Lord. Open the eyes of my heart. I want to know you.
Basically, I just added this box. It allows it to smooth the signal and get rid of that protection that fix your copy.
See you high and lift it up. Shining in the light of your glory. Pour out your power and love as we sing, holy, holy, holy. Quiet now. Holy, holy, holy. Holy, holy, holy. Yeah, I wanna know you. And the U-Book will show you. One more. Holy, holy, holy. Holy, holy, holy. Yeah, I wanna know you. The U-Book will show you.
We got Ruthie. Ruthie on the come home.
Okay, say, is there a way to... Oh, you did it. No, we're good. Okay. Welcome to the afternoon. And this afternoon speaker, who is Chuck Thurston, going to change up my pattern and actually read his bio that he was kind enough to send me and I remembered to put in front of me. Chuck began his study with the Urantia Book in the mid 1970s. After exploring many other sources of spiritual insight, the discovery of the Urantia Book and its extraordinary teachings marked the beginning of a new and transforming growth in understanding the nature of God and the meaning of our existence. Over the years since, Chuck has been closely involved with the world community of Urantia Book students and has offered many workshops and presentations at annual conferences and other gatherings. He is currently a co-host on the Saturday morning Cosmic Citizen Blog Talk Radio Podcast and is working with Derek Samaras on the production of video podcasts for the Urantia Book Network YouTube channel. I've enjoyed many of Chuck's presentations virtually, asynchronously. And again, like so many of you, I was thrilled to meet him in person. And I think you're really going to enjoy his presentation, which will now take us to the teachings of the Sage of Salem. Chuck?
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate the introduction. All right, Machiaveta, here we go. Rodan once said of Jesus, "The better you know Him, the more you will love Him." And with Jesus, that's a profound realization, I think, that we all have. And get a little closer to the mic, too. Let me know if I'm too close or too far. Anyway, I think the same is true of Machiaveta. That's what I've been discovering, at least, as I've taken this deep dive into what we can learn about Machiaveta from the Urantia Book. And the more I learn about Him, the better I get to know Him, and the more I get better I get to know Him, the more I love Him, literally. So, you know, people talk about takeaways from presentations. What I'm hoping for today is that some... The takeaway that I'm hoping for from my presentation today is that you will love Machiaveta more when you leave than when you came in. So, let's see if we can make that happen. This image of Machiaveta, by the way, I've searched online, I searched and searched and searched for depictions of Melchizedek, and there are a lot. But this one ended up being my favorite. And I like this because there's something about his gaze. It's strong, but it's compassionate. But it's also challenging, too. He's saying, "Come on," you know? It's like, "You can do this. We can do this," right? In the manner of a brilliant teacher, which he was, which he was. Let me know if you're having trouble hearing me. Sounds okay? Any case, so this depiction is from a sculpture from a monastery in Russia from the 19th century. So who is Machiaveta Melchizedek? If you go online, you can find all kinds of websites and, you know, information online asking this question. Who is Machiaveta? They don't know his name is Machiaveta. They just say, "Who is Melchizedek?" This is a great mystery because he's mentioned in the Bible in kind of mysterious ways, but who he was is not really understood. And there's this comment from the Urantia Book, I think it's very appropriate. They say, "This is the story," and it's kind of what I'm gonna try to do today. "This is the story of Machiaveta Melchizedek, one of the most unique of all characters ever to become connected with the history of Urantia and a personality who may be destined to play an important role in the future experience of your irregular and unusual world, to say the least." So just to provide an overall frame, context frame for Machiaveta and his Urantia ministry, this is just a brief summary of kind of of his existence, but particularly his roles on this world. So I don't know how many of you know this, but the Melchizedek sons were created... Let's see if I can count. Hundred thousand, million, yeah, 300 billion years... 300 billion years ago. So they've been around a long time. But 200 million years ago, he... The Melchizedek, when the Melchizedek receivers arrived following the rebellion, he was one of them. So this was his introduction to this world, 200 million years ago. Then about 40, 37, 900, more or less approximately, the receivers departed as Adam and Eve became established as the world rulers and everything was looking good for about 100 years, right? And then after their default, the receivers all came back, right? So Melchizedek came back to the world at that time, along with the other receivers. But 4,000 years ago, he did his emergency bestowal mission, and that's mainly what we're gonna focus on today. But following that, in the 6th century B.C., he somehow also initiated a worldwide revival of the Salem gospel. So that's pretty important and pretty extraordinary. And we'll see a little bit more about that. Then following Pentecost, the other receivers departed, but Melchizedek joined the Council of 24, which was this new administration that was set up following Jesus's bestowal. It included the 12 groups of seraphim who serve as our planetary administrators, along with the assignment of governor general to one of the members of this council, which Machiaveta has served. So about 930 A.D. or 1,000 approximately, Machiaveta served a 100-year term as resident governor general on this planet. And then even more recently, maybe approximately 1,900 years ago, Machiaveta assisted with the authorship of the Urantia Book and even co-wrote one of the papers. It's the paper on universal unity. So if you're familiar with that paper, it really shows the reach of his mind, let's say. You know, it's definitely one of the more challenging papers. But it takes us, you know, he's a teacher. He's a master teacher. So in that paper, he's trying to lead us and point us in directions that we've never even conceived of before. So he's continuing to work with us. And as a member of the Council of 24, he's, you know, he's involved on a day-to-day basis with our affairs. And then they tell us some unknown future time, he will serve as vice-chairman planetary prince. He'll actually step in as ruler of this planet. So that's exciting. Yeah. Which number? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, that's right. It wouldn't be a million. Yeah, yeah. Humans began a million years ago. Yeah, 200,000. Sorry. Good. You guys are so sharp. You'll keep me straight here. Okay. But the scope, the span of that time is pretty remarkable, and either way. Okay, so this is the story of Machiaveta's incarnation. And there's sub-stories within the big story, and we're gonna be looking at those today. So there's the origin and nature of Melchizedek sons and the emergency bestowal that we know about from the Urantia Book. And within that, there's the story of his teachings and the Salem colony, how that was created and what that, how that functioned, and then the Salem missionaries. And then we'll look for a bit at the legacy of Machiaveta's bestowal and just a couple of teachings from the library at Alexandria that trace back to the Salem missionaries. It's kind of an overview. Okay, this is one of the passages in the Bible that speaks of Melchizedek that's known. There are only a couple. There are only a couple in the Bible. But this one is remarkable because it reveals the understanding that he was a superhuman being of some kind. "Without father, without mother, without descent, having neither beginning of days nor end of life, but made like unto the Son of God, abideth the priest continually." So this is in Hebrews, which is part of the New Testament, which is... The authorship is a matter of debate of the book of Hebrews. Some say Paul, some say others. And it was written in mid to late 1st century. So it shows that there were humans on this planet that understood a little bit about him, even at that late date, particularly that he was superhuman in nature. Okay, so this is a couple of slides here about the origin and nature of Melchizedek sons. And correct me if my numbers are wrong. Anyway, 300 billion years ago, the Andronaverse solar circuits were well-established. About, you know, that was sort of the core of Nebadon. That was the beginning of Nebadon. About this time, the staff of Michael arrived on Salvington, so the architectural spheres had been created, and the universe government of Orvinton extended physical recognition to the local universe of Nebadon. There ensues the bringing into existence of a vast and wonderful array of diverse creatures. The sons and daughters of the local universe are forthcoming. Dual deity in the local universe, the son and the spirit, Michael and the mother spirit, function in the creation of three high orders of sons, the Melchizedeks, the Verandex, and the Lenanex. The Melchizedeks of our universe were all created within one millennial period of standard time by the Creator's son, Creator's spirit, and liaison with the father Melchizedek. So the thing to notice here is that the Melchizedeks were the first created of these three orders of descending sunship. And that's important because it shows their seniority. And that becomes manifest or experienced. By the way, one of the things I want to encourage everybody to do, to do, as I'm going through this, make note of places where you pick up a little bit about the character of Machiaveta, where you get kind of a feeling about his character and how and why he serves the way he does. So one of the things they point out is that the Melchizedek sons, being the first created of the descending orders... I mean, Gabriel was created first, but it's just a single being. But when it came to the time of creating these orders of being that serve as descending sunship, because the Melchizedeks were created first, they're looked upon as occupying the position and assuming the responsibility of the eldest son in a large family. So that's a really interesting kind of characterization, characterization of the Melchizedeks. They're like the eldest son in a large family. And there's no phase of planetary spiritual need to which they did not minister. The Melchizedeks are the first order of divine sons to approach sufficiently near the lower creature life, which would be us, to be able to function directly in the ministry of mortal uplift, to serve the evolutionary races without the necessity of incarnation. It is easily possible for such a son to make himself visible to mortal beings. So Melchizedeks have three different ways of bringing influence and inspiration to planetary life. They can do it invisibly somehow, which we don't necessarily fully understand. They can incarnate, like Machiaveta did 4,000 years ago, actually become a mortal of the realm for a temporary period. Or they can simply just make themselves visible for a moment, for who knows? How that, and I don't think we've experienced that on this world yet. Maybe we have and don't know about it. That's also a possibility. But they have these three different ways of functioning, which is fascinating because they're the only descending order of sunship, I think, that can work in those three different ways. So let's see. Okay. While the Melchizedek orders are chiefly devoted to the vast educational system and experiential training regime of the local universe, they also function in unique assignments in unusual circumstances. Sort of characteristic of them being like our older brother. When an extraordinary problem arises or when something unusual is attempted, it's quite often a Melchizedek who accepts the assignment. On Adentia, your constellation headquarters, they're known as Emer- On Adentia, your constellation headquarters, they're known as emergency suns. The Melchizedeks are the first to act in all emergencies of whatever nature on all worlds where creatures dwell. So this is another little character clue here. They're the first to act. Something's wrong. They volunteer. They go in. Take me, you know? They have this, this attitude toward our problems that inspires them to want to inspire us. So I really love that aspect of who they are. They're the first to act. So your house is burning down, who runs in? Who rushes in to try to rescue someone that may be trapped inside? Sort of the equivalent of that. They rush into burning buildings like our planet, you know, you can sort of look at it that way. And then they go on to say that the seraphic orders, the angels delight to work with the Melchizedeks. In fact, all forms of intelligent life find in these suns understanding friends, sympathetic teachers, and wise counselors. And that's kind of the feeling I get from that depiction of Melchizedek that I used in the opening slide. I feel that for some reason in that depiction, that we would know him as an understanding friend, sympathetic teacher, and a wise counselor. They are the teachers who so often win whole worlds of advanced life to the final and full recognition of the Creator's son and his paradise father. Now, keeping that last comment in mind, here, they also tell us that recent rulings handed down from the Most Highs of Adentia, later confirmed by the ancient days of Uversa, strongly suggests that this bestowal Melchizedek is destined to take the place of the fallen planetary prince, Caligastia. So if that's the case, then he's going to be our guy, going all the way through and beyond light and life, potentially. So in that capacity, he would probably be the one to win this whole world to this final and full recognition that they're talking about there. So those two quotes, they kind of go together in an interesting way. Okay, so now let's get to the emergency bestowal mission. Revealed truth was threatened with extinction during the millenniums which followed the miscarriage of the Adamic mission on Urantia. About 3,000 B.C., the concept of God had grown very hazy in the minds of men. So this is all being observed, right? And the 12 Melchizedek receivers that were on here on the planet at the time, that come at the time of the rebellion, and then came back after the Adam and Eve default, knew of Michael's impending bestowal. Therefore, they convened in solemn council and petitioned the Most Highs of Adentia, some provision he made for maintaining the light of life, light of truth rather, on Urantia. This plea was dismissed with the mandate, probably not rudely dismissed, but we'll see what they, what they mean here. This plea was dismissed with the mandate that the conduct of affairs on 606 of Satania is fully in the hands of the Melchizedek custodians. The receivers then appealed to the father of Melchizedek for help, but only received word that they should continue to uphold truth and the manner of their own election until the arrival of a bestowal son. So what I get from this is that the Melchizedeks are just, are trusted. You know, we trust you. Just do what you feel you need to do. They were left to exercise their own initiative. And I didn't include the quote, but in the book, they say that their, their wisdom is a fit, how they put it exactly, because their wisdom is almost perfect, almost infallible. So their wisdom is respected, and they're said, okay, it's in your hands. We trust you. You can do this, don't worry about it. So thrown onto their own devices, then, these 12 receivers, who volunteered? Macavenna, I'll go, I'll go, I'll go. Volunteer to do that, which has been done only six times in all the history of Nebadon, to personalize on earth as a temporary man of the realm, to bestow himself as an emergency son of world ministry. So this is one of the ways that they have of, of helping out on a troubled planet like ours, and he volunteered to do this. So that's what we're going to be looking at more closely. Now, here's a map that might be helpful to keep in mind, just to get a lay of the land, where this occurred. So particularly, pay attention to the location of Salem, of course, which is where the, the colony was established. But nearby is Chaldea with Kish, Kish and Ur. And Chaldea is, comes up many, many times in the book. You know, Chaldea was where the best understanding from previous revelations, in many ways, was still part of the understanding of the people there. And then if you look up a little bit, you'll find Lake Fan, which will become important in this story, in the Hittite kingdom, up in Asia Minor. So anyway, just to kind of have a sense of the lay of the land, as this was happening. Okay, so 1,973 years ago, was the time the book was written, or no, before the birth of Jesus, rather, Melchizedek was bestowed upon the human races of Urantia. So the use of the word bestowed in this context, it's like a gift, you know, just kind of look that word up to make sure I understood it. It's like a gift. So he's a, he personally is a gift to the human races of this planet, which he volunteered to sort of give himself in that role. He was first observed by mortal man on that eventful day when he entered the tent of Andon, a Chaldean herder of Sumerian extraction. So going back to that map, Chaldea is sort of in the lower part of Mesopotamia, which is related to Samaria. So it may not have been a random choice on Macavenna's part to make first contact with this Chaldean herder. The proclamation of his mission was embodied in a simple statement which he made to this shepherd, "I am Melchizedek, priest of El-Elion, the Most High, the one and only God." So this is this opening state, opening statement. And of course, this herder was like, ah, what's going on, right? Anyway, but that's pretty dramatic, if you think about it. He doesn't waste time. In personal appearance, Melchizedek resembled the then blended Nodite and Sumerian peoples, being almost six feet in height and possessing a commanding presence, which is something else I feel from that depiction in the opening slide, a commanding presence. But not unkind, but, you know, serious teacher, right? He's going to really help us out by makings, by revealing some new truths. And he himself was a revelation in that sense. He spoke Chaldean, interestingly enough, and a half dozen other languages. He dressed much as did the Canaanite priests, except on his breast, they used to have these funny breastplates, he wore an emblem of the three concentric circles, the Satania symbol of the Paradise Trinity. Like Jesus, Melchizedek attended strictly to the fulfillment of the mission of his bestowal. He came to achieve two tasks, to keep alive on earth the truth of the one God, and to prepare the way for the subsequent mortal bestowal of a paradise son of that universe father, which of course, we now know as Jesus. So he wasn't here to redesign our plumbing, or to show us how to create a better government even, or any of those things. He was strictly focused on these, just like Jesus was, on our understanding that we're children of God. And then in addition to that, he had this huge responsibility of preparing the way for Michael's bestowal. And this, a couple of next slides kind of summarize the outcome of this emergency bestowal, but has a kind of an interesting way they say this. So first they say, "Macavenna Melchizedek, with power, patience, and authority of the Son of God, did lay the foundations for the further uplift and spiritual rehabilitation of unfortunate Urantia. Urantia religion was in no small measure regenerated by the efforts of those teachers who were commissioned by Macavenna Melchizedek. Their teachings, though unproductive of any immediately appearing religions, nevertheless formed the foundations on which later teachers of truth were to build the religions of Urantia." So this, just a little preview, what we're going to see is that there were kind of two vectors to Macavenna's plan. The first was to work with the offspring of Abraham through the religion of Judaism as it evolved from that period. But the other part of it was to send missionaries out all over the world. So we'll see how those two work together and how maybe one was more successful than the other. So this is the beginning now of his teachings, which began with that same Chaldean herder. So they say, "That night, as they, you know, they supped together, I believe, and they were talking out under the stars," which is such an endearing picture. Again, you know, getting these endearing feelings about Macavenna. They say that Melchizedek began his mission of the revelation of truth, of the truth of the reality of God, when with a sweep of his arm, sweep of his arm, he turned to Andon, this herder, saying, "El-Elion, the Most High, the divine creator of the stars of the firmament, firmament, and even of this very earth on which we live." He is those things. And he is also the supreme god of heaven. So he's having this social, sort of ordinary encounter with this shepherd, but then he throws in, you know, information like this. So he's a revelator of truth, and we can see him just in his very being and what he shares and how he talks, how he fulfills that mission. This emergency son of Nebadon inaugurated the third revelation, revelation of truth on Urantia. So there's Dalmatia, there's the garden, didn't work out so well. The cardinal precepts of his teachings were trust and faith, like getting back to basics. Let's start here. Trust and faith. He taught trust in the omnipotent beneficence of God, and proclaimed that faith was the act by which men earned God's favor. So we'll see more about that second point. But I think that other one's pretty interesting, too. Trust in the omnipotent beneficence, beneficence of God. So not only is God omnipotent, but he's beneficent. So when we grasp that, then these ideas of trust and faith begin to make a lot more sense. Here to fore had been believed the salvation could only be, could be secured only by sacrifices and offerings. Now, Melchizedek again brought to Urantia, the good news, that salvation favor with God is to be had by faith. So this is super important because if you believe that sacrifice is the only way to get to God, that's a total mischaracterization of the nature of God. Sacrifice is destructive. It's closed-ended. It doesn't go anywhere. Whereas faith is open-ended. You can take faith and create new possibilities through faith, but sacrifice just, you know, it shows a lack of trust in God. God wants me to hurt myself, or, you know, do these sacrificial offerings that erase value rather than create new value. So this is what he's kind of trying to get to. But Macavenna well knew how difficult it is to suddenly uproot long-established customs, and accordingly, had wisely offered these people the substitute of a sacrament of bread and wine for the older sacrifice of flesh and blood. So bread and wine, that's positive. This is a way of, and Jesus, in, you know, remembrance, it's kind of the same idea. And this is the other, probably best well-known quote in the Bible about Melchizedek, where they say, "Melchizedek, king of Salem, brought forth bread and wine. He was the priest to the Most High God," and that's from Genesis. And this is recorded to have happened after Abraham returned victorious from a battle, and it's depicted in many, many paintings. But I don't think that people in general really understand that that's what that means when they say that he brought forth bread and wine. They're talking about him trying to, because Abraham was going to go out and do a bunch of sacrifices just to make sure he was okay after winning this battle, right? And Melchizedek says, ah, you don't need to do that. Let's just have some bread and wine and celebrate our, you know, the Most Highs. So this is really important, I think, to see that quote from the Bible in this context, that he was trying to make this changeover in the understanding of God, that sacrifices are no longer, you know, they never really were necessary, but he's trying to help people to understand that. So this great teacher has supported everything to the doctrine of God, a universe deity, a heavenly creator, a divine father. Emphasis was placed upon this teaching for the purpose of appealing to man's adoration. He wants people to fall in love with God, basically, and preparing the way for the subsequent appearance of Michael as the son of this same universal father. So if he can help people learn to love God, then they're much more readily going to love his bestowal son. So that's kind of his strategy there. To some, Melchizedek taught advanced truth to his, you know, he taught up to the capacity of whoever he was teaching. You know, we kind of have the experience with the Urantia book, too. I mean, we really draw upon the stuff that we can understand, and maybe some teachings go beyond us, we maybe come back to those later. And he was kind of like that. But this Norden the Kenai, this is kind of interesting and important because the Kenai, I think it is, the Canites ended up very, being very important in carrying his teachings into the future. So to his brilliant disciple, Norden the Kenai, and his band of earnest students, he taught the truths of the super-universe and even of Avonah. I mean, he was really able, they were ready to receive, you know, the best he had to offer. And then they also make this comment, that the members of the family of Katro, with whom Melchizedek lived for more than 30 years, knew many of these higher truths and long perpetuated them in their family. But the thing that's interesting in here, for me, again, getting a sense of his character, is they invited him into their home to live with them for 30 years. So he had this personal, personal, personable quality where he could just become part of their home and family life, right? And I just think that's a marvelous image to keep in mind, that in terms of just how he, he didn't run off to his tent every night, you know? He would hang out with these people, even lived with this family for 30 years. In conceiving of dea, okay, now, let's see. Yeah, so we're kind of getting to the summary here. This, I think, is really interesting. They say, "In conceiving of deity, man first includes all gods, then subordinates all foreign gods to his tribal deity, and finally excludes, excludes all but the one God of final and supreme value." So this is kind of the, you know, theistic approach to God philosophically. But the Melchizedek concept of deity was unlike that of evolutionary philosophy. It was based exclusively on creative power and very soon influenced the highest deity concepts, Mesopotamia, India, and Egypt. So this idea that the revelation of the nature of God that he's presenting is one of creative power. So sacrifice, you're afraid of God, right? But in this new, new concept that Melchizedek is presenting, we realize that we achieve our creative power through faith, that faith gives us power, creative power, to do good, to do things that are true, beautiful, and good. And that's what he was trying to win people over to understanding. But I really love how they put that, that it was based on creative power. So he's trying to map a way into the future where the human races could bring about their own improvement. And we need God for that. We need faith for that. With the passing of a decade, Melchizedek organized. Okay, now we're going to see a little bit about the story of the Salem colony. So rewinding a little bit, or going back to when he was first getting started, they say, "Within the passing of a decade, Macavenna organized his schools at Salem, patterning them on the olden system, which had been developed by the early Sethite priests of the second garden." So he knew about that, and he's reinstituting that essentially. The Sethite priesthood was a threefold undertaking, embracing religion, health, and education. And if you look at those three, religion is like spirit, health is like body, and education is like mind. So we have this body, mind, spirit symmetry of approach to serving as a priest. And all of his missionaries were trained in this concept, that they all were approaching their ministry to whoever they were encountering with this in mind. So this is, you know, the great triad, body, mind, spirit of our understanding of the nature of reality. So it's, I think, very interesting and remarkable that he, Melchizedek, picked up on that from the Sethite priests and continued that. I mean, it's so true, it's so real, it's so good, it's so helpful, so. All right, so they say that for some time, the Melchizedek receivers have been observing the ancestors of Abraham. So Macavenna realized he needed a human leader. If he's going to create this colony, this school, this community, enlarging community of followers of his teachings, he knew he was going to have to leave at some point. So he wanted a human leader that could carry on the effort after he left. And that was super important. I mean, he couldn't just come and go and hope for the best. He needed somebody, some key person in place to carry on this work after his departure. So the receivers confidently expected offspring in a certain generation who would be characterized by intelligence, initiative, sagacity, and sincerity, which is so crucially important. And the children of Terra, the father of Abraham, in every way met these, met these expectations. So they're watching this, and they decided that, you know, Macavenna decided he would incarnate in that. incarnate in that during that timeframe. Terah and his whole family were half-hearted converts to the Salem religion, which had been preached in Chaldea of all places. They learned of Melchizedek through the preaching of Ovid, a Phoenician, Phoenician teacher who proclaimed the Salem doctrines in Ur. So going back to that map, if you remember that map, this is where this is all kind of happening. Melchizedek taught revealed truth at Salem for 94 years. And during this time, Abraham attended the Salem school three different times. He finally became a convert to the Salem teachings, becoming one of Macavenna's most brilliant pupils and chief supporters. So this took a little while. You know, Macavenna had to sort of work on Abraham to move him to this position because Abraham was a very successful military leader and he just wanted to, you know, he was kind of more inclined to serve that way. But finally, Melchizedek persuaded him by making a formal covenant with Abraham at Salem. Said he to Abraham, "Look now up to the heavens and number the stars, if you are able, so numerous shall your seed be." So he got to Abraham, because Abraham wanted to create this kingdom, but he didn't have any sons to follow in his footsteps. So Macavenna promises him, "If you work with me, I'll make sure this happens." And how that goes on, we have no idea, or at least I don't have any idea. But in any case, this covenant with Abra-, of Macavenna with Abraham represents the great Uranshian agreement between divinity and humanity. So as part of the teachings coming out of the Salem colony was this idea that humans can partner with God. You know, it's not just a passive relationship. We could partner with God and we can make these kinds of agreements where we play our part and God plays God's part and together we create super additive outcomes. So it was not long after the establishment of this covenant that Isaac, the son of Abraham, was born in accordance with the promise of Melchizedek. Wow. After the birth of Isaac, Abraham took a very solemn attitude toward his covenant with Melchizedek, going over to Salem to have it stated in writing. Upon the consummation of this solemn covenant, the reconciliation between Adam and Abraham, rather, in Melchizedek was complete. So they'd kind of been at odds up to that point. Abraham again assumed civil and military leadership of the Salem colony, which at its height carried over 100,000 regular tithe payers on the rolls of the Melchizedek Brotherhood. Abraham greatly improved the Salem temple, provided new tenants for the entire school, new tents, rather, for the entire school. He not only extended the tithing system, but also instituted many improvements, improved methods of conducting the business in the school, besides contributing greatly to the better handling of the department of, besides contributing greatly to the better handling of the Department of Missionary Propaganda. So here we have Abraham as a successful general. He knows how to organize people, he knows how to motivate them, he knows how to get them to go out and make things happen, right? You have to do that as a general. So he took those skills and abilities and applied them to the missionaries that were then being organized in their Department of Missionary Propaganda. Melchizedek, now, the time finally came, of course, when Macavenna had to take off. He couldn't stay here forever. So Melchizedek's decision to terminate his sojourn in the flesh was influenced by numerous conditions, chief of which was the growing tendency of the surrounding tribes and even of his immediate associates to regard him as a demigod, to look upon him as a supernatural being, which indeed he was, but they were beginning to reverence him unduly and with a highly superstitious fear. And that was like interfering with the real importance of what he was trying to do. But Melchizedek, the other factor coming into when he left was that Melch-, Macavenna, Melchizedek, wanted to leave the scene of his earthly activities sufficient length of time before Abraham's death to ensure that the truth of the one and only God would come strongly established in the minds of his followers. So he wanted, when he left, he wanted to know that Abraham would continue to live for a significant period following that. But it was a great trial for Abraham when Melchizedek suddenly disappeared, although he had fully warned his followers that he must sometime go. As he had come, they were not reconciled to the loss of their wonderful leader. And Abraham went through a whole, you know, became depressed, you know, he kind of went through a weak period after that. But they say then that the choice of Melchizedek was actually a good one because it was not long, Abraham was not long to be deterred in his mission as a successor of Melchizedek. Abraham again became a great leader in Palestine. He was held in reverence by all groups and honored by all kings. He was the spiritual leader of the surrounding tribes and his influence continued for some time after his death. So this is the first vector of Macavenna's strategy is to bring this new spiritual understanding into the progeny of Abraham and other related groups who were part of the, that local group of believers and followers. Melchizedek, and then they say that Melchizedek continued for some years to instruct his students. So now, okay, so now we're going to get into Salem missionaries. All right. So this is the second, the second vector, the second phase of Macavenna's strategy, you might say. So Melchizedek continued for some years to instruct his students and to train the Salem missionary, Salem missionaries who penetrated to all the surrounding tribes, to Egypt, Mesopotamia, and Asia Minor. And as the decades passed, these teachers journeyed farther and farther from Salem, carrying with them Melchizedek's gospel of belief and faith in God. So again, take a quick look at this map. They're here saying that Egypt, Mesopotamia, Asia Minor, this is where the missionary efforts began, and you can see how those all surround Salem. Then they go on to say, "The descendants of Adamson clustered about the shores of Lake Van." Again, remembering where Lake Van is. Ah, Lake Van were willing listeners to the Hittite teachers of the Salem cult. From this one-time Andite center, teachers were dispatched even farther to the remote regions of both Europe and Asia. Salem missionaries penetrated all Europe and even to the British Isles. One group went by way of the Faroes Islands to the Andes of Iceland, while another traversed China and reached the Japanese of the Eastern Ireland. So here's another little map that shows, shows everywhere they went. You can see the reach of these missionaries across essentially the entire hemisphere, which is quite remarkable, if you think about that. And here's just a list I put together of all the places that they mentioned that were reached by this, reached by the Salem missionaries. So I don't, I don't want to read this, but you can see from this list and from that map that their influence was widespread, to say the least. And then they talk about the character of these missionaries, which I believe is a reflection of the character of Melchizedek. He, you know, they wanted to live up to his expectation in a sense. "The lives and experiences of the men and women who ventured forth from Salem, Mesopotamia, and Lake Van, which is a very important center, to enlighten the tribes of the eastern hemisphere, present a heroic chapter in the annals of the human race." Whoops. "In Japan, far distant from Salem of Palestine, the peoples learned of the incarnation of Macavenna Melchizedek, who dwelt upon earth, that the name of God might not be forgotten by mankind." "Uranshah's never had more enthusiastic and aggressive missionaries of any religion than these noble men and women who carried their teachings, carried the teachings of Melchizedek over the entire eastern hemisphere. These missionaries were recruited from many peoples and races, and this was kind of, they're part of their strategy for how to teach maybe in languages that some, they didn't even know. They would recruit people from the places where they went. They established training centers in different parts of the world where they taught the natives the Salem religion and then commissioned these pupils to function as teachers among their own people." So this is a brilliant strategy. And if you think about what it took to get to Iceland, I mean, just think about it. It's like, whoa, the, the level of their motivation and determination. Okay, so that's kind of the brief snapshot of the missionaries. Now we're going to look at the legacy of Macavenna's bestowed. How did this all work out, right? "The same Melchizedek continued to collaborate throughout the nineteen succeeding centuries with the many prophets and seers in ways that we don't necessarily understand." This sort of the invisible approach, you might say. "Thus endeavoring to keep alive the truths of Salem until the fullness of the time for Michael's appearance on earth." And we learn that the teaching of Melchizedek was full and replete, but the records of these days seemed impossible and fantastic to the later Hebrew priests. So the Hebrews were one strategy, and that's what followed from Abraham. But unfortunately, the Hebrew scribes, because, well, for a number of reasons, but this being one of them, destroyed every, every record of these momentous times which they could find. This is why we don't have a historic record of Macavenna. It was destroyed, preserving only the narrative of the meeting of Abraham and Melchizedek after the Battle of Sidum, which is the one I showed earlier with the painting, which they deemed reflected great honor upon Abraham, right? So this is a hugely significant destruction of the historic record of Macavenna's effort. So that's why it was so important that he had this other strategy that was also being implemented simultaneously. But this, because they point out, thus in losing sight of Melchizedek, they had also lost sight of his teaching. The teaching of this emergency son regarding the spiritual mission of the promise bestowed on, you know, the coming of Jesus. They lost sight of the nature of this mission so fully and completely that very few of their progeny were able or willing to recognize and receive Michael when he appeared on earth and in the flesh, as Macavenna had foretold. So we could see how that played out, you know, when Jesus, you know, was put to death, right? There are some people who followed him, and some people understood what he was getting to, and his apostles were very loyal and effective, but that part of Macavenna's plan was essentially sabotaged. And then, so interesting thing, so Macavenna could see this happening. So the destruction of the written record of his bestowed happened around 600 B.C., when the writing of the books of Moses was being undertaken by the, by the priesthood. And in that also was this intensely, almost viciously, well, totally viciously, nationalistic concept of God that was also put in the teachings at that time and which is inconsistent with the nature of Jesus. He couldn't go with that. Jesus couldn't go with that. So Macavenna could see this happening, right? So they point out about 600 years before the arrival of Michael, it seemed to Melchizedek long since departed from the flesh, that the purity of his teaching on earth was being unduly jeopardized by general absorption into the older Uranshian beliefs and also for other reasons, like the destruction of the written record, right? It appeared for a time that his mission as a forerunner of Michael might be in danger of failing. So that's a really strong statement, and he's observing this around 600 B.C. He sees these things that are happening, the undermining of his effort among the Hebrews at least, or the, you know, the, the Semites of that region of Palestine. "In the sixth century before Christ, through an unusual," and so this is what he did about it, "in the sixth century before Christ, through an unusual coordination of spiritual agencies, not whole of which are understood even by the planetary supervisors, Uranshah witnessed a most unusual presentation of manifold religious truth. The Salem gospel was restated and revitalized, and as it was then presented, much has persisted to the times of this writing." So remember the map, the map where all the missionaries went? They were planting the seeds for this. And that's what really saved the value of his work was the fact that all over the planet, there were other populations, other peoples who were being prepared also to receive Michael's message as a bestowed son. "This unique century of spiritual progress was characterized by great religious, moral, and philosophic teachers all over the civilized world. The basic doctrines of Greek philosophy, Jewish theology, and Christian ethics were fundamentally repercussions of the earlier Melchizedek teachings." So that's what was achieved by this. And they conclude by saying it is nearly 4,000 years since this emergency son of Nebadon bestowed himself on Uranshah. And in that time, the teachings of the priest of El Eleon, the most high God, had penetrated to all races and peoples. Melchizedek teachings are a basic factor in all the religions of Occidental, Occident, and Orient that have arisen in the last 4,000 years. So this is the successful, the, the second strategy of sending missionaries out over the whole planet to sow the seeds of receptivity to Michael's message. That, that was very successful. But as we could see from what happened to Jesus, the first part of the plan, even though there were many that were receptive, and this notion of monotheistic God was very much present in Judaism because of the cultural and political, economic, and other issues that were surrounding all of that, that he was not well, he was not received, Michael, Jesus was not received with, with open arms, right? By the people that he intended to receive his teaching. And, you know, and Jesus, like Melchizedek, did the best he could with that, made the best use of it as he could, even though he was put to death, he's, that, the way he handled that was so inspiring that it's motivated people ever since to realize his nature, the nature of Jesus. So, you know, it's this way with these divine beings that they can take even the worst of circumstances and turn them around into something of tremendous value. So the last part here, just a couple more slides that I found fascinating recently to discover is in Paper 131, which is a compilation of teachings that Gannett and Jesus put together in the Library of Alexandria, that were existent in the Library of Alexandria at that time. So Jesus was kind of looking over Gannett's shoulder as Gannett was making this selection that this team of other people that his father was paying for were collecting from everything they could find in the library. And they point out that should be made plain in this record, that all these teachings in Paper 131 portraying monotheism were largely derived directly or indirectly from the preachments of the missionaries of Macavenna Melchizedek, who went forth from their Salem headquarters to spread the doctrine of one God, the most high, to the ends of the earth. So these teachings that they collated and compiled were from all over. You know, they came from China, they came from Japan, they came from Palestine, they came from, you know, all over. So I've just picked a short selection of some of these teachings that they found in the Library of Alexandria. And as I read these, just kind of imagine you're in the Salem's colony, you know, you're in the schools that Macavenna set up, and you're hearing these teachings from Macavenna in the school. I mean, that could very well be possible. So imagine you're there in class in the Salem colony, you're taking notes. We got Macavenna coming in today to teach us, so I'm going to take some notes. So what's, what's he going to tell us, right? And these teachings were then carried with tremendous motivation to the ends of the earth. But as I read these, you can begin to get a feeling for why that might have been the case. So he's standing up there in front of the class and he says, "Creation is in the Creator, and the Creator in his creation. We search for the most high and then find him in our hearts. You go and quest of it to your friend, and then you discover him within your own soul. Come now, let us reason together, says the Lord." That one, I think, is, is really special because it suggests the idea of collaboration, which is not in the sacrifice concept. You don't collaborate with someone you're sacrificing to, but you do collaborate with someone maybe you have faith in or you know as a friend, right? So this idea, come now, let's reason together. It's like, God wants to hear from us and we need to hear from God. Let's put it together, let's see what we can do together. And that's, is that from Isaiah? Anybody remember? I know it's from Judaism, but in any case, that one, I just, this is kind of really special, I think, because there's so much in those few words. Okay, now he's going on with the class. The most high, the most high is like a loving father and mother. Ooh, father and mother, yeah, this, you know, it's only now with Uranshah book that we have the elevation of the mother aspect of deity coming into balance with the father aspect. So this suggests that that was being taught in Salem, which I think is fascinating. And then they say, "He really loves us, his children on earth. He will take us by the hand and lead us to himself. God saves those who trust him." Pay attention. Okay, God saves those who trust him. And then he says, "Those who love their fellows and who have pure hearts shall see God." and who have pure hearts shall see God." And you think, okay, I want to see God, how do I do that? Oh, let me check my notes. I have to love my fellows and have a pure heart, right? I mean, such a simple but profound teaching. His pride, and then he goes on, you know, maybe to say, "The primeval spirit," there's like a spirit coming from eternity, right? "Within the mortal, his gods, the Most High, God's primeval spirit dwells within the mortal soul." So this is essentially the thought adjuster concept being introduced by Macavenna at Salem. "Let us long meditate on the adorable and divine vivifier." Whoa, what a concept. You know, the adjuster within us brings us alive. It's a source of life and inspiration within us. "Long meditate on the adorable and divine vivifier. Let his spirit fully direct our thoughts." Wow, okay, sign me up. "God is our protector. He stands by the side of his creatures, and those who learn to know him become immortal." Wow. So there's the promise of survival, there's the promise of salvation, there's the promise of eternal life that Macavenna is sharing with his students and that they're carrying out over the world. But I love how that's put, it's very personal. "Stands by the side of his creatures, and those who learn to know him become immortal." So it's this invitation to know God. And of course, sacrifice doesn't do that, you can only do that with faith. And this is the last couple things I'll read here. So we're getting toward the end, end of the class, better. People side their pens and pencils out, he said, or whatever they had. He says, "God is farthest from us and at the same time nearest to us, in that he dwells within our souls. God is the divine and holiest spirit of paradise." Whoa, talking about paradise. You know, the picture that's being presented here is, you know, it's like we find a lot of this in the Urantia book. "Our God is the divine and holiest spirit of paradise, and yet he is more friendly to man than the most friendly of all creatures." So that's, you know, says so much, you know, God being the creator, all of us and all of these creatures, that he's the most friendly. He's more friendly than the most friendly of all creatures. So again, this character of God that's being portrayed by Melchizedek is consistent with the nature of Melchizedek and his character. So this truth is kind of a pure revelation in that Melchizedek is this way as a son of God himself, which gives him the authority to present God in these terms. And then finally, right before dismissing the class, he says, "God is with you. Have no doubt in your heart." And, you know, sending off the missionaries with that message would just be so inspiring, so encouraging and motivating, you know? I mean, it would be for me. So this is Macavenna's gift, I think, to our world.